Our artificial audience. Look, Jim Adherholdt is with us, Town Council Member Jim Adherholdt, and he's, it looks like he's got graphs and charts. I can't wait to see all that.
He brought visuals.
Jim, how are you?
Good morning. Nice to be with you this morning.
Thanks you so much for coming on once again. We appreciate you're always great, great to us and gracious to come on the show. And it's, it's always much nicer when you bring your lovely wife like you have.
She's got her Beach Talk Radio Cam and her new mug that she got this morning, which she's admiring greatly.
Yes, very nice. So how are things going on the council? How do you, now it's been a year now.
It's been a year. March was the election. And one of the things you guys were kind to have me on a couple of times during the campaign process. And one of the things we talked about was clean water. And you rightfully kind of joked about every candidate being for clean water. And what I was pitching at the time was an idea to try to get our snowbirds involved in the advocacy program for clean water. And we finally got an initiative. My colleagues on the council have been very supportive. The town's been supportive. And we've got something we're going to launch in the next couple of weeks that I want to talk about this morning. And you guys have been kind of do some articles about it on your website as well, which have been great. And I wanted to just give a little background on what we're gonna, on our approach, if I could.
Sure. Yeah. And I think it's such a unique idea. It's something different, rather than, you know, all the other good things that we hear, like, don't do this or do that. But this is really a unique opportunity for people to get involved.
Just in a nutshell, now you have to tell me how to hold this. Maybe Kim, you hold it. It'd be better if you hold it. But this is the, this is kind of the pitch. This is going to be a mail piece. We're going to do two of these to all the households on Fort Myers Beach. And the mantra is, the town of Fort Myers Beach wants you, enlist in the fight for clean water now. And there's Uncle Sam, and there's our peer in the back with our logos and so forth. And on the back, it kind of tells you how, as much as you can do on a postcard. And we're going to do similar pieces like this in advertisements and all the regional newspapers around the Fort Myers Beach area. And I think it'll be a really good hit. And with shows like yours, and your newsletter, and other, some of the environmental groups I offered, John offered this morning to push this out under his social media, Captains for Clean Water, going to push it out through Jackie Leesek in the Chamber. They're going to push it out. So we'll have a whole media campaign. And hopefully we'll get the word out. So, so here's the, here's the pitch. And if you wouldn't mind, let me filibuster for a minute, because it's kind of a complicated long story. But in a nutshell, everybody remembers 2018. We had this massive red tide hit and blue-green algae to Fort Myers Beach. It was almost apocalyptic. And it was like a science fiction movie. It was sheer devastation, the piles of dead fish, the smell, the toxins pouring out. There was no birds left on the island. They'd all left. The people was like a ghost town on Fort Myers Beach. The smell, it was just, it was horrific. And it hit in the summer of 2018, and in the fall, and it just lingered. And it was just really devastating. Again, a lot of it's coming from this nutrient pollution that John talked about, coming from Lake Okeechobee down to Kalusahatchee. It's also going east as well, causing problems on the East Coast. So we had this massive devastation. We have, we had gubernatorial election in 18, got a new governor coming in 18. I'm a little more optimistic maybe than John is on the state front, because our new governor, Governor DeSantis, really was solid on the clean water issue. Came out with his plan to say $2.5 billion over four years. Huge amount of money, particularly compared to how little we were doing in the past. So that's really $625 million a year. So his first year, and credit to the Florida Legislature as well, they passed over $625 million in 2019. In 2020, which was just this last year, with all the pressures of COVID, the governor had to make some really tough decisions. But he prioritized clean water, $625 million again, plus some additional programs passed. So the first two installments have been made. So we're now into installment number three this year. The difference this year is, there are no elections this year. So I mean, there are some local elections in Sanibel, etc. But in terms of statewide and nationwide, there really are no elections that impact those who are setting water policy. So the goal would be, is to enlist all these wonderful snowbirds who come to Fort Myers Beach who love our island, and get them to put some pressure on our politicians at both the federal and the state level, those who visit from all over Florida, to put some pressure on these politicians, of which I'm one of them, I know how it works, to do that in an off-election year cycle. You talk about campaign fundraising and finding, you know, follow the money, etc. And there's a lot of understandable cynicism about politics because of finance, campaign finance. But I'll be honest with you, I worked for a member of Congress for 16 years, both in DC and in the district office. I've worked for a governor. I've been an elected state representative. The money is a big, big part of our process. But when you get a letter from your constituent, that's handwritten or typed out and hand-signed, and it's from the district in which these folks represent, it has such an impact on these folks. They really watch, because these are the people that can put them out of office. They're the people that can reelect them. And that really matters. So, so what we're trying to do is, is get the snowbirds down here. We call it the Snowbird Advocacy Army. We want folks who are visiting Fort Myers Beach. You have listeners from all over the country, all over the world. For those of you who are listening, what we're, what we're encouraging you to do is write a letter to your US Congressman. Every, we have 435 congressmen.
I just want you to know, Jim, that I put that up there as you're explaining it. I put up the links if anyone wants to jump on there so that they can click on that. It's on our website now, Beach Talk Radio News. And go ahead and explain where they'd be linking through and sending a letter.
That's beautiful. Take a look at those links. But you can just Google who your congressperson is. Many of you know who your congressperson is. Every state, of course, has two United States Senators. So the goal is, again, if you're outside of the state of Florida, if you're not a resident of Florida, wherever you're located is to write your congressperson a letter, and your two United States Senators. And again, why this is a little bit more, a little more, little different, a little more complicated, but I think more effective, is we want you, in the first part of the letter, to say, why clean water is important to you. You come down to, you've been coming to Fort Myers Beach every 20 years, or for 20 years, and you love the water. You love to swim. You love to, you love to boat. Maybe you love to fish. Maybe you love the environment. You love to birdwatch, shell collect, whatever. Make it personal to you. And tell that elected official why clean water in this area, particularly in Florida, is important to you. And then encourage them to do something. Say, could you please co-sponsor some legislation that furthers Everglades restoration, or clean water in Florida? And if you really want to make an impact, ask that member of Congress or the United States Senator to say, hey, please write the chair of the House Appropriations Committee and the ranking member, and in this case now, after the election, it's a Democrat chair, Republican ranking member. Ask that member of Congress to write the chair and say, hey, we are supportive of, I, this member of Congress, and my constituency is supportive of clean water. Please advance Everglades restoration efforts in the appropriations process. And then same, do the same thing to your two United States Senators. So you can, you can either type out the letter and hand sign it. Make sure your return address is on the envelope. Slap that first class stamp on the envelope. Because right now, what politicians see, there's so many, we call it astroturf lobbyists. I actually did some lobbying in my previous life as well. And you get these computer-generated form letters. You get, you get postcards. People are calling on the phones. I tell you, those are, you know, that has some impact, but it's marginal, because everybody knows it's sort of corporate lobbying. But if you get actual indigenous, motivated, personal letters from your constituents, these members of Congress, I used to, I saw it firsthand, they see these letters. It has an impact. The staff sees them. They inform members before votes. They inform them on what legislation to co-sponsor, what legislation to push. And right now, in this off-year cycle, when there is no election, there's a lot of competition for dollars at both the state level and at the federal level. Now, at the federal level, Governor DeSantis comes in, 2019, gets full funding for Everglades Restoration Act, which is federal, it's a federal matching program with the state, $200 million. Again, President Trump, to his credit, and the Congress, fully funded the Everglades Restoration Act, the second time in its 20-year history it's ever been fully funded. Last year, again, because of the election, and because of the DeSantis' relationship with Trump, we got $250 million of federal dollars, again, fully funded Everglades restoration at the federal level. And with this new administration, again, this is a completely nonpartisan issue. Expect the new administration to be supportive, but they need to hear from folks. The new governing powers, the Democrats in the House and the Senate, they need to hear from the voters that this is still important. It's particularly important in this not-election year. So thanks for the filibuster. But it is a complicated issue. But people really, I know there's a lot of cynicism in politics. But if a member of Congress, Congress in Ohio, gets 25 letters, or even quite honestly, 10 handwritten letters, or personal letters, that aren't form letters, they pay attention. So again, having this snowbird impact, and again, the objective of having advertisements in the newspapers, it's not only to impact people who are visiting down here all over the region, but hopefully some other towns and cities in southwest Florida will also copy this idea and encourage their folks to get in touch as well. And then we could have a nice, I think we could have a pretty positive impact on both the national picture, but also, again, the people who live here in Florida and visit, they need to go contact their state representative and their state senator. They've got one state senator, one state representative. You can Google, Ed's got the links there on his website, as to how to find who those folks are. But you need to write that state rep and that state senator as well, because again, the state of Florida, that's not all on the coast. You've got ag interests, you've got education interests, you've got a lot of pressure for these dollars. And the Senate President right now has expressed some real skepticism towards these new reservoirs that are being built. And he could thwart some progress. So we need to tell these folks, again, the Senate President, they're very, he's Senate President because he was elected by his colleagues in the Senate Caucus. If his caucus says, hey, we want these reservoirs, we want to have this overflow controlled, so we're not polluting the Kalusahatchee, and therefore our bay. And so you've got to make sure the legislature at the state of Florida knows of your passion as well.
Well, thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining us today, folks. And
Sorry.
No.
But there's so much information.
And I think that that's, that's a good point. There is so much information. And, and I know you talked about not having form, a pat form letter, because it is more relevant, and you want people to speak from their heart. But is there a place where they can maybe pick up some information? Because it is so, you know, it is so complicated. Is there on the?
I think that's where these, somebody, somebody who might not know, okay, I want to write a letter because I want clean water, but I don't know what to put in it, because I'm not really sure what I'm asking for. I just want to make sure I have clean water.
Not like a form letter.
It can get complicated.
Yeah, just some.
It's very complicated. I think the first paragraph should be, why clean water is important to you. And then all you need to do is say, I want you to support or co-author legislation that supports clean water efforts. And if it's at the federal level, the Everglades Restoration Act. So again, but if you need more information, that's where groups like John's group that was here earlier, your guests, they have the, they have the more of the broader scientific background. Captains for Clean Water, all of these environmental groups are really great resources to understand the issue better. But where my background comes is to how to take that expertise, and then advocate it in a way that makes policy changes for the better, hopefully for clean water. That's what we're talking about this morning.
And these are going to go out to local residents?
These will be mailed to every resident on the, on the island of Fort Myers Beach. And it'll be every household. So that means even the renters will get it. And also hopefully be our snowbirds. It won't just be registered voters. These will be, every residence, every household will get one. So again, if you're renting a house and you're from out of town, you'll see this. It'll show you how to get in touch with your member of Congress back home in Ohio. But if you're renting from Miami, you can get in touch with your state representative and your state senator. Again, the Floridian Advocacy Reserves, this is the military theme we're talking about, if you're, if you live in the state of Florida, Snowbird Advocacy, Snowbird Advocacy Army, if you live outside the state of Florida.
Are you, are you making all these up, or are they actual organizations?
Well, I've, they've been created as part of this campaign. So yes, I'm making them up. But they're, they're not really organizations. They're to help people kind of conceptualize the difference between how people outside the state of Florida can help, but how the people in the state of Florida can help as well.
What about, is there, is there any thought to, or a way to get them into the hotels?
We are, we are going to have extra copies printed at the town. So if hotels are interested in putting those in their lobbies, that's a great idea, Kim. I've been in touch with Jackie Leesek at the Chamber. She wants to be very supportive. So I'm sure she can help us get the word out in that way, through groups like your, your earned media opportunities are tremendous. I mean, it's just going to take kind of a broad effort. But it can't just be Fort Myers Beach. My hope is to keep Coral copies, Sanibel, Marco Island, all these coastal communities, who have a lot of influential people coming to visit. And then they go back home, and hopefully they'll reach out and have an impact.
And please, let us know. If you write a letter, type it in the box, and let us know when you write a letter.
Debbie says she'd love to have it at her vacation rental. So make sure you get her name after the show.
Beautiful. Thank you. Excellent.
So are you happy with the way things are going so far water-wise?
I'm, I'm, you know, John raises issues of growth and long-term challenges. But in terms of where we were as a state a couple of years ago, and where we are now, I mean, we have serious funding pouring in, because these are massive infrastructure programs. I mean, these are giant reservoirs. I mean, this is, I'm no scientist, but this, to dumb this down, what we're trying to do over the last 100 years, development has caused the water to flow east and west. It's flowing through the Kalusahatchee. All the runoff is going from Lake Okeechobee down to Kalusahatchee. We've got runoff problems in the Kalusahatchee as well. It flows into the bay, and it exacerbates red tide, tide, and it causes blue and green algae in the canals. What we're trying to do is to change that whole water flow. Instead of going east-west, it flows naturally like it did in the past, down south through the Everglades. Because the Everglades, as you guys know, is sort of a natural filter, and it naturally cleans the water. And it's the way the water needs to flow. So that involves building these massive reservoirs, and it means elevating these highways that go east-west, so the water can flow underneath. I mean, there's, these are massive infrastructure programs. So yeah, I mean, we still have some challenges on growth. But if we don't make these infrastructure changes quickly, and quite frankly, they are being made right now. I mean, they're being built. You had, you had the gentleman from Sanibel on the other day, who's chair, who chairs the water district.
Yeah, Chauncey Goss.
These are massive, massive projects that involve huge funding. And so finally, in the last two years, you've seen a commitment at both the state and federal level, which is very encouraging. And hopefully I'll spin this, be part of the Fort Myers Beach Renaissance, as we clean up waters, we do all these other wonderful things to our island.
Every time we bring you on, from now into the future, if you ever come back, when we hope you do, we'll call you the Renaissance man, because you're starting to spread that joy and cheer across the beach.
I'm not sure I'm that interesting, but I appreciate the thought, yeah.
So the Everglades Restoration Project, can it ever be restored? I mean, how long is this going to take? And how much money is it going to take over the long run?
It's, it's literally billions. And it's, it involves, again, elevating highways, so water can pass underneath, again, flow naturally north-south. And so, so in these giant reservoir systems, so they can manage when and how the water flows down the Kalusahatchee. And so it's, it's the appropriate balance, because you need some water to flow, because it has to do with salination, again. Smarter people than I will can explain all that. But it's, but it is, it's a 10-year program. But this is the first time in a long, long time that the funding piece has been serious, and it's addressing, again, most of the, most of the, and it's also got septic tank conversion dynamics to it. There's a new resiliency piece to this whole thing. So I mean, there's, there's all kinds of dynamics going on. And it used to be just hot air and rhetoric, but now there's actual funding backing it up, which I think will have a huge impact. I think we'll start seeing, this reservoir that the state senator, the Senate President was contesting, that has the ability to reduce nutrient pollution down the Kalusahatchee to our area by over half. And you know, that's a huge impact. I mean, when you talk about cutting it 50%, that's a big deal. And they've already broken ground on it. I mean, you could see the giant explosions, they're building this giant reservoir, and it's already, it's happening now. So it's not a pipe dream. That's why we've got to keep the pressure on.
So anything else on the water? I want to throw some quick, fast, innocent questions at you. So the, the Nuisance Abatement Board was something that you were really for. Are you happy with the makeup of who you have?
I think we have great people on the Nuisance Abatement Board. They're practical people. Anybody who still has concerns about the Nuisance Abatement Board, I would just give you some peace in saying, that the bar for the Nuisance Abatement Board to even come into being is so high. Two felony counts in over a six-month, in a six-month period. And again, it's, the initial phase will be conversations. And it's not, it doesn't have to be draconian. My thought will be that the Nuisance Abatement Board likely will never meet. That doesn't mean it wasn't a success, because it's out there. It's a deterrent for entities that have habitual problems that aren't being responsive to the community. If you're being responsive to the community, and to the, to the sheriff's office, and to the code enforcement folks, it won't be necessary. But again, these are, this is high-bar items. I mean, so, so folks that are worried about, you know, the smaller code enforcement things, it has nothing to do with that. These are felony crimes that are habitually being committed on the island. That's, that's, it's really more of a deterrent dynamic. But the people that are on it are smart people. We've got business people on there. We've got people that have served this island in a very responsible way over the years. And I think it's going to be fine. And I'm glad they're, I appreciate their service. But I doubt we'll, we'll ever have to use them.
The three major projects, Bay Oaks, Bayside Park, and Times Square, are you happy with the way they're coming along?
Well, I think Winston Churchill said, democracy is the worst form of government, except for all the others. And so it's, it's never been a pretty process. But I do think we're making progress. I mean, with the, with the Bayside Park, we're ready to launch. And I wish we could have got a little bit more input from the neighbors and the businesses around there. But we are making progress on that. Times Square has a beautiful vision. There's still, all we're fighting about now is the sale, which I hope we don't have, because I think it blocks the view. But if, when you have a massive project like Times Square, and that's all you're fighting about, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good dynamic. We're going to keep the clock. But everything else is going to be beautiful. And there's some discussion about delaying that for a little bit, to be sensitive to the merchants down here, which I, I totally understand, gives us a little bit more time for some grant opportunities. And then the Bay Oaks Project, I think it's going to be really spectacular. It's a brand-new community center, where one doesn't exist. Hopefully we'll, we'll have a longer-term plan to, to address the exercise facility there. But I think there's, there's some neat opportunities on all three of those projects, combined with all the other things we've been talking about on Estero Boulevard, the new bridge on the south end, the new foot of the bridge on the north end. I mean, it's, 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 it's back to that Renaissance dynamic. You couple that with cleaner water coming down, with all the development with Margaritaville. This is such an exciting time. You talk to local realtors on this island, they are swamped, because there's so much excitement, so much optimism for Fort Myers Beach. I know we get caught up in a lot of the negative stuff, and it's important to hash those things out. But the broader vision for Fort Myers Beach is really spectacular. It's taken off.
I just want to ask, of all of those projects that you mentioned, is there any way, or is it too early yet to say, this is, are they all going to happen at the same time? Or this is slated to go first, second?
Do you read the newsletter?
I, I didn't get to that part.
It's Bayside Park, for sure.
But it is Bayside. But your question is actually really good, in the sense that it's very, whoever's going to have to manage Margaritaville with the foot of the bridge, with Times Square, with Estero Boulevard, other infrastructure, needs stormwater and water main issues. I mean, it's going to be a master, it's going to be like a conductor of an orchestra, because it really needs to be sensitive, because we're going to have traffic. We already have traffic challenges. So you couple that with our lighting challenge. We've got some massive things that are going on. So hopefully some really, we could all get together and everybody communicates with each, with each other. And we do that in a smart, and as smartly, and as smart and efficient as you can. Because you're right, we're setting ourselves up for a, a real challenge with coordinating it to go smoothly together. But boy, when it's done, just as we've seen with the Estero Boulevard, it's going to be spectacular.
So the, real quick, a short answer is fine. The Lonny Kai said they were going to incorporate some changes to help out with the safety over there. Are you happy with how they've been doing?
I'm happy that they've made that pledge. I hope they'll come back to the council and give us an update. I've not seen anything recently from them, but their initial pledge, and the steps that they were going to take, I think were positive. But I'd love to see them come back and give us an update, Ed, because I don't really know how all that's been going.
Is there anything you want to say, and you don't have to, if you don't want to, about the Dune Walkover?
Well, the Dune Walkover, I'll just be honest with you, our town attorney tells us that our case is very strong. And so I always, I always say that the Dune Walkover, it's very clear, it's in the interests of those two homeowners. I absolutely acknowledge that. But where I wrestle is, I don't know that it's in the town of Fort Myers Beach interest to do that. That's a beautiful, really pristine area back there. And to build a giant bridge back there, I just, I'm still uncomfortable with it. But the litigation's proceeding. I know there's a lot, it's very controversial. I'm watching the litigation. I know the town has some exposure there. But again, our lawyers are telling us that we've got a very strong case. I don't have any ill will against the people that are applying for this. I, I understand why they want it. I wish, I wish it well. But I just, I just don't think it's in the town's interest.
Does it worry you at all that the critical wildlife area might go away?
I think that, again, is difficult to know at this point. It does, it's something I'm sensitive to. But I think there's a little bit of hyperbole around that. Maybe there's not. We just, you know, when you get into the, people say, oh, the negotiations are done, we're going to court. Well, anyone knows that you can settle at any time.
Right.
And so if there's, if there's something that comes up that would be against the town's interest, or against the critical wildlife area, I'm certainly willing to listen. But right now, I just, I don't see this, this project as being in the town's interest.
When you see all these people down here that you've been seeing, how does that make you feel about the economy on the beach, and how things are, how things are looking once everybody starts to get the vaccine, and people start to feel better? I mean, I can't imagine living in Michigan, or states like California, where they were so locked down, and it didn't seem to do them any better.
I love where we're positioned, in terms of the state of Florida. Our economy is so much, in such better shape. There's such a, you looked at folks down here, that first of all, the crowds are spectacular. And the optimism, again, particularly coupled with the vaccine, I just see people seeing light at the end of the tunnel. And I just hope folks are encouraged by that, coupled with all the wonderful things happening on the island. I just see a great, sort of that light that's shining on the hill. I just, it's right there.
That beacon.
That beacon. And we're almost there. And it's been a really rough year. And it's, but, but I think, hopefully we'll all get to, we've had a tough election. This, this, this virus has caused a lot of dissension. I'm just hoping we could all come together after this is all over, and move forward together.
Trivia question for you.
Yes, please.
What is the most fishingest bridge in all of the United States of America?
Ah.
That's a great line. It was a great line.
I can't believe you didn't bring up the lights. I thought you were gonna...
I couldn't remember everything. I'm having a rough day. So yeah.
Let's talk about the lights. We had, we had a, I don't know how you'd describe it. We had a presentation from Florida Power and Light, that was really more of a generic PowerPoint. I was glad they were there. But the one thing that has changed on the light front, is they've offered us three alternatives, that they didn't offer before, that are turtle-friendly. And if we could find one of those that makes sense for the island, and then utilize a lot of, there's a number of poles that don't have lights on them.
So that was my, when I heard that, I was like, well, it would seem like if we, that would be a good opportunity to use those lights with, and, and maybe that would throw enough light.
And maybe that's the answer, Kim. I think if you take the existing lights, replace them with the turtle-friendly lights, and then you put lights on poles that don't currently have lights. Again, there's, there's a lighting expert that's...
Oh, the photometrics and all of that.
It is a science. There's no question about it. But, but the key thing to remember is this, why, why are we dependent upon FPNL? It's because there's a tariff, which they have, which allows these to be cost-recovered by the utility. In other words, the town of Fort Myers Beach does not have to pay for these lights if we utilize Florida Power and Light's option. If we don't, then it comes out of our pocket, or the county's pocket. And there's some debate as to who's got responsibility between the county and the town.
Well, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but FPL owns those poles.
That's right.
So if you don't use them...
It's, it's a huge investment.
It's a huge investment. I mean, the upside of that is then you own it. But it's, that's a huge upfront cost.
Takes a long time to recover those costs, after you, if you invest in your own poles and light fixtures. And, and again, this is what they do. They are a monopoly, but they have an obligation. They're heavily regulated monopoly. They've got an obligation to serve our, our community. And we're hoping they'll be more responsive. These three new options give us some, some flexibility now. And hopefully we'll get this done with this lighting consultant. And it really shouldn't take long, with what you suggested, the new...
Well, I'm no lighting consultant.
No, I know. But I mean, I listened to the same thing. I thought, I've got these poles that we're not utilizing. We've got a fixture that's, that's going to be paid for by the, by FPNL. Let's just do it. Let's move. I think, somebody's got to look at it from a, from a, from a scientific standpoint. But I think we're, I think we're close to being able to go.
I guess, too, I just, just let me ask this one thing.
You're like FPL today. You're monopolizing all the questions.
Well, FPL does. I mean, they're all over the place. We're, and I didn't watch the entire thing. But were they able to bring up other places that they've done this? Because it just seems like, how can it be so intricately unique to just here? And maybe it is, I don't know.
It's a great point. I know you're going to get, ring the bell for that. But it is a great point. But why do we have to reinvent the wheel? There's so many coastal communities. But it seemed like FPNL was reticent to recommend anything for our island. Either they didn't want to be responsible or liable, but they're the experts. They've seen what's worked in other islands. Why can't they just suggest something?
They kept asking you guys, what do you guys want?
Yeah. And we know, we know we want really bright lights, as bright as possible, that don't affect the turtles. I mean, help us. I mean...
Jim, you were, you were nice to FPL today. But that day, you, you, you were, you were close to being as livid as you can get. You were not happy with the presentation, and you felt like they're leaving you hanging, and somebody's going to get hurt on that road.
Well, it's bad. It's really, you drive, especially with construction, it's so bad right now. And Florida Power and Light came to us. I'm getting happy to have them there. But they were so generic, and they didn't have any solutions for us. And, but they did provide some options that hopefully we'll be able to utilize with their, I know our folks are concerned about the lighting consultant, but you really do need someone with a science background and a lighting background. Fortunately, on the council, Dan Allers is a lighting expert. And then we also have an electrical engineer with Bill Veach. So we've got some science on, on the council, which will really be helpful. And so hopefully, it just doesn't seem like we're that far from the solution. We ought to be able to move quickly. I hope we can.
Is there anything else you want to cover before, anything more on the water? By the way, I want to make sure we give a shout out to Jenny Dexter. She's been very helpful in getting the information out. And I'm sure that the links, in addition to them being in the print, which, as we've had discussion, they're hard to kind of just click on when people are so used to having things instant. They'll be probably on the website, and they'll be pushing them out on the Facebook page, so that you know, if you don't, you know, if you don't want to type them in on your, on your computer, you'll be able to go to